Jazz is six with B W B on K Jazz eighty eight point one. And that was three shades of the evolution of the trumpet. Miles Davis, Christian Scott, and Dizzy Gillespie. One way to look at it, these are the architects of jazz. And Christian is continuing that tradition. Man, talk about nice, but that's what K Jazz is all about. We know where our roots began and we stay with them. Up next, we're going to have Chuck Mangione take us right on up to the top of the hour. And out of Jazz at six, you can get into it again tomorrow morning with David Benoit. Jazz at six on K Jazz eighty eight point one. Enjoy the breeze with Bubba. Jazz is six with B W B on K Jazz eighty eight point one. And that was three shades of the evolution of the trumpet. Miles Davis, Christian Scott, and Dizzy Gillespie. One way to look at it, these are the architects of jazz. And Christian is continuing that tradition. Man, talk about nice, but that's what K Jazz is all about. We know where our roots began and we stay with them. Up next, we're going to have Chuck Mangione take us right on up to the top of the hour. And out of Jazz at six, you can get into it again tomorrow morning with David Benoit. Jazz at six on K Jazz eighty eight point one. Enjoy the breeze with Bubba.
KKJZ FM and HD one Long Beach. From California State University Long Beach, this is K Jazz eighty eight point one.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'll get started at seven o'clock and the camera is on. And we call the meeting to order. Mr. Sloan will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
Please stand by me. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, the one nation under God, indivisible, with the mercy and the love of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Thank you. Can we have the roll call, please?
Planning Commissioner Steve Sloan here. Vice Chair Esther Cummings. Madam Chair, she's absent. Planning Commissioner Robert Goldberg.
Here.
Planning Commissioner Patty Campbell.
Here.
Madam Chair Sandra Levitt.
Massa Levitt.
Massa Levitt.
And I'm here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We will go to approval of the agenda now. By motion of the Planning Commission, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda, rearrange the order of the agenda, and provide an opportunity for any member of the Planning Commission or staff to request an item be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Do we have any changes to the agenda from any of the commissioners? Okay, then we'll move ahead. Oral communication. At this time, members of the public may address the Planning Commission regarding any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the commission cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Mr. Ecker.
Good evening, Chair Massa Levitt, Commissioner's staff, the public, Safika, talking from the Seal Beach Chamber of Commerce as the Chair of Governmental Affairs. So I know that you don't necessarily have jurisdiction over what I'm about to talk to, but I wanted to make sure that you are aware of some actions and positions that the Seal Beach Chamber of Commerce takes that are relevant to planning or development related issues in our coastal zone and with our sister cities. And at the DAS, I provided to you a letter dated Friday, April nineteenth, the South Coast Air Quality Management District, or AQMD, in reference to Amendment of Rule four four four, in particular with firings. As I have addressed this commission before and also city council, it appears that some entities like the water governing body, the Air Quality Management District, these governing bodies seem to be taking over more and more what should be, in the chamber's opinion, local power. And that's a troubling trend that we seem to have a steady position against. Later during the public hearing, I'll address a couple of issues pertaining to local control and making sure that we maintain local control during the public hearing issues as much as we can. But the Air Quality Management District really started off in Newport Beach. Then Newport Beach decided that maybe they didn't want firings, so they were going to ban firings in their city. And then AQMD said, maybe we're going to ban firings in all coastal cities. And Huntington Beach was screaming and saying, wait, we don't want that to happen. And so Huntington Beach put out a call to kind of arms from their convention of visitors via their Chamber of Commerce to say, hey, wait a minute, firings are important for our visitors and activities. And the reason, too, that I bring this to your attention is I was at a city council meeting recently about benches on Seal Way and on the beach and in the right of way. So it seems like there are times where certain citizens want things to change or stay the same. And I guess the position of the chambers, let's always look internal to our community rather than allowing external bodies to legislate. And that's just our position and I wanted to share it with you. Also, the Edge Series, the Educate, Develop, and Grow the Economy of Seal Beach, which is a free business development seminar series, started today, Wednesday, and will occur every Wednesday through the beginning of July for five weeks. Thanks for your consideration.
How do you get on the edge or in the edge or with the edge?
Thank you for asking, Chair Massa Levitt. You can contact the Chamber office at five six two seven nine nine oh one seven nine or send an email to info@sealbeachchamber.com.
Thank you. Anyone else for oral communication? Anyone else like to get up that has an item that is not on the agenda? And the massage issue is on the agenda, so you'll have an opportunity to speak. Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on to the consent calendar. The only item on the consent calendar is approval of the Planning Commission meeting minutes of May first, 2013.
Hello. Second.
Okay, please vote. Okay, four to one. Consent calendar is approved. There are no scheduled matters, but we do have one public hearing. Municipal Code Amendment, MCA thirteen dash six, which applies citywide. This is a code amendment regarding massage parlors or facilities, let's say. And can we have the staff report, please?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. The ordinance set before you this evening is the direct result of recent passage of two bills. It's Senate Bill seven thirty-one and Assembly Bill six one nine. Those bills have been recently codified into the California Business and Professions Code and commence under sections four, six, zero, zero thereafter. Essentially, the bills established a centralized licensing and regulatory process for massage businesses or establishments and for massage practitioners and massage therapists. The laws that were established through the statutes in the state of California specifically relating to this type of establishment wanted to ensure that local jurisdiction referred to massage establishments similar to any other professional service, such as an architectural firm or a law firm or a county firm. In doing so, the law further permits or requires that local jurisdiction refer to their zoning provisions and ensure that they're permitted in the same fashion as any other professional service. With that being stated, the ordinance just before you this evening is structured based upon the statutes provided in the Business and Profession Code in that we're establishing a regulatory process that is actually less controlled than what our municipal code currently establishes, which it still requires that a massage establishment goes through a conditional use permit process. With that being stated, that's not enforceable any longer pursuant to the statutes that are provided in the Business and Profession Code. So in our provision, we are requiring, which is currently governed and administered through what's called the California Massage Therapy Council, that's been structured and established in the Business and Profession Code that oversees the certification of massage practitioners and massage therapists. The California Massage Therapy Council conducts all of the background checks, all of the application requirements for the education and the hours necessary in order to fulfill the position of that certification. Our ordinance would make sure that if anyone comes to the city or to the business license department or planning department and applies for a business license to serve as a practitioner or therapist, they must first demonstrate to us that they can show us they received their certification from the California Massage Therapy Council. Once they have that certification and they present that to us, we then would permit them to establish a business license and locate within the jurisdictions of the city of Seal Beach. The other part of the provisions relating to the ordinance is the massage establishment. If the person who is the operator of the establishment is not licensed or, I should say, certified by the California Massage Therapy Council, they're required to go through what's called a background check whereby they submit the fulfillment of an application process for which we will create. The process requires a background check through the police department and through the process of the Community Development Department. Once that process is concluded and that person is deemed approved, they may move forward and open a massage establishment, but they are not permitted to engage in the massage service. They're the ones who either own the establishment or operate the establishment. The folks who are permitted to engage in massage are those who have been certified. And certified meaning that they have obtained their license through the California Massage Therapy Council. The ordinance also includes some provisions for which we would inspect the premises to ensure that it complies with the Business and Profession Code that relates to the health and safety aspect of that establishment. And there is a renewal process that would be created whereby we will still need to make an annual inspection of the establishment to ensure that they're up to date with their certifications and either the independent contractors that they have hired or the employees that they have hired have the current licensing pursuant to the California Massage Therapy Council. And that basically concludes our presentation. What staff would recommend, that the Planning Commission hold a public hearing, take any public testimony, then close the public testimony and adopt Resolution thirteen dash six. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I might add.
Yes.
Today, we made some slight changes to some of the operating requirements. We provided those changes in red line to you on the DAS, so it's a strikeout and underscore. They're pretty straightforward. I can run through them rather quickly. The first one we did is we struck the original subsection A that said that at least once a certified massage professional had to be on the premises at all times and open to the public. It was pointed out to us that there are many businesses that provide services other than massage, and so there's no reason to force them to close just because there's no way they provide massage. So that's been taken out of the draft before you. We've also cut down the fourth requirement regarding a list of services to be provided for the public. The language there is in the current code. The language that we gave you originally was in the current code and we simply brought it over. It was, it came to the staff's attention that it's fairly difficult to comply with to have signage that's that large on the premises. And it hasn't been an issue for the city in any other regard. So we simply required, with this revision, that there be a list of services written somewhere and provided to the public so somebody can see what is available and what services are available. We thought that was a good way to accommodate the concerns of the establishment owners. There was also a concern regarding what's number, or letter P on page eleven. This is the requirement that employees must be dressed in clean opaque outer garments, covering the body from knee to neck at all times on the premises. There's a question of whether or not it's required, hands and arms to be covered as well. It was never intended that way, obviously, but we just made it clear by writing in an exception for hands and arms so that nobody has any worry about whether or not that's covered or not covered, I should say. And the last changes in U, and this was an oversight on the drafter's part, and I know because I was the drafter, this is about the exterior doors shall remain unlocked during business hours.
What number is that?
I'm sorry, this is letter U on page twelve.
Okay.
It's renumbered on ours because we limited it to A. Okay, so I'm sorry. So whereas it said previously, all exterior doors shall remain unlocked during business hours from interiors, I forgot to add what's actually a requirement under state law, which is except when no staff is available to ensure the security of clients and massage who are behind closed doors. So if people are, if you have, for example, a sole proprietor who's the only person working at the establishment and he or she's getting a massage in a back room, they can lock that front door, good for their own security. That's it for those changes. They're fairly straightforward. They were designed to, you know, address some of the concerns that were raised prior to tonight's meeting. And I'm available to make questions on that.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commission?
I have some questions, please. In reading this, they went into detail about their establishment where they're holding their business. Can they go into clients' homes?
No. Outcall massage wouldn't be allowed. It has to, all massage must be offered in a massage establishment. A massage establishment would have to comply with the zoning code. Zoning code would not allow a massage establishment in a residential zone.
So they cannot take their business, go into somebody's private home?
No.
Okay.
And that's no different than what, under the current requirements. Current requirements, no outcall massage.
Who is going to do the enforcement of this for the city?
It would, I'm sorry, go ahead. That would be through the Community Development Department.
Sorry, what?
The Community Development Department enforcement.
Code enforcement?
Enforcement, yes.
Okay. So we have licensing by the state now.
We wouldn't be enforcing the licensing by the state. If we're aware of any, anything that potentially disqualified a person from providing massage services, we would simply report it to the California Massage Therapy Council.
So now they're going to need to be licensed by the state?
Correct.
Okay. And so I guess code enforcement will be enforcing that.
That's correct.
Okay. Now, this doesn't take the city out of the enforcement process, but it does take the city out of the licensing process. They weren't licensed before. We weren't requiring license before.
Yeah, under the, what the city previously did, which is what most cities that I'm aware of did, is they had, they had a licensing requirement for the individual massage practitioner. And then they also had a permit requirement for the establishment itself. So you had a permit for the business and a permit for the individual persons who were providing the service. The state said, we can only do that, the permitting for the individual, well, if somebody has a state certification, we can't require a local permit for that individual practitioner.
Okay.
So we're out of, we're moving out of that business completely now.
Okay, that's it. What I was getting at is the city is getting out of the permitting process, but they have to be licensed by the state.
Correct.
Okay. That's happening to a lot of things lately in our city. The state's taking over the licensing and residents just have to deal with it. So you can have an unlicensed owner, but not an unlicensed operator?
Unlicensed practitioner.
Practitioner, okay.
We refer to them as state certified massage professionals.
Okay. Now, the process from start to finish. Originally, someone would come to the city, request a business license and a permit and set up shop, where if they had a spot for their business. Now, they're going to the state to get licensed and then they're coming to the city. Now, if someone is opening up a massage establishment, you can have someone who's not licensed being an owner?
Right, but that person would have to undergo a local city process of background check.
Okay, so you can have an unlicensed owner, but he has to, he or she has to have licensed therapists.
Correct, correct.
Okay, I'm just trying, you know, look at what it was and what it's going to be. And from what I see is, is the state is again taking the city out of the process. As we saw this with the adult care homes, okay, and the homes for middle school kids, they pop up in your neighborhood licensed by the state. The city cannot do a thing about them. And this is where the state is taking over, really, the local city's jurisdiction. I can see these places being licensed by the state, but other than that, the jurisdiction, if it's in the city, the city needs to have more authority than the state grants it. That's just my own personal opinion.
Your own editorial opinion. Your own editorial position.
Well, no, I just feel that the state is taking more of the city's purviews away from it.
Been going on for decades.
Oh, I know, but it's just another grab.
Won't stop now.
If I might just add to address some of that concern, one of the goals that Jim and I took when putting this together was to preserve as much from the existing ordinance as we could, given the structures of state law as it's now codified. So we've really tried to preserve as much local control as we can in the process. I think we have a workable framework here.
See, the state licensing them, I think that's very good because that sets a baseline. But beyond that, I think the individual cities should have a little bit more flexibility.
Well, we do have some flexibility here in whether or not a store can be established. They have to follow all the rules.
Well, they have to comply with the zoning code.
Right.
One of the, one of the ways in which state laws also preempt the city is that we must zone them in a manner that, in which, in a similar manner to we zone these other professional services. So, and that they've defined that category very broadly. So we've essentially made the massage businesses permitted by right in the same way that we allow medical and office uses permitted by right. There are some limitations on Main Street, but those same limitations apply to medical and office uses as well, so.
So this is another unfunded mandate by the state?
Yes.
Anyone else have questions?
Thank you.
This code, was it modeled after that of another city or did we draft it entirely?
A lot of it is modeled on the existing requirements. We've changed it around, we have different processes, but the overall structure is kind of guided by state law and Jim and I drafted it. Is there any particular provision that?
No, I was just wondering how other cities might be handling this issue.
Many are in denial about what the state law is actually requiring them. I've seen others that are just, they've allowed them in by right, haven't instituted the background check process before, so.
Now, if the owner is a non-personality?
We provide for that. There is provisions for if there's partnerships or corporations that come in, they have to designate one officer to go through the process and be accountable. And they go through the background check in the same manner. We look at their business history and things like that, but obviously, we can't look at their criminal background necessarily to the entire corporation. But we, they still have to go through the process and get approved. And that's, we also designate any owner of five percent or more of the business, so multiple people have to go through the background check for a given business if there's multiple partners or corporate entities.
But the therapists themselves, if they're licensed, don't have to go through a background check?
And we are in fact expressly preempted from requiring that. They do undergo a background check as part of the state certification process. And Jim could probably speak a bit more about how he's able to monitor the compliance on that front. But, so it's not like they're completely unregulated, we're just not doing it.
No question. Mr. Goldberg?
Are we currently doing background checks on owners?
To my knowledge, we are not. There is a massage establishment permit requirement. To my knowledge, nobody's applied for one recently, and so we haven't gone through that process. There is a background check component of that. And there's a background check component to the massage technician permit that's currently in the code.
That I understood. And it's clear that, that for us to give a permit for massage therapists, they would go through a background, but it wasn't clear that we currently have any background process for the owner of the establishment.
Yeah, as part of the application review for massage establishments, it's in five point five, four, five point oh three five, there is a review of the criminal history, for example, of the applicant.
But you're correct, Commissioner Goldberg, there is provisions in the municipal code, but we don't have an actual application that we are currently using that's going to be created.
And in the current code for owners, is there any process where that background is subject to review on some periodic basis?
Yeah, those permits, I think, have a term for only one year, and so it has to be renewed. Let me double check that. I know for the individual technician permit, those are our annual permit, they have to be renewed annually under the local permitting requirements.
Are you referring to the proposed ordinance or what's in the municipal code currently?
I'm trying to understand what we're currently doing for owners. These are owners who are not masseuse, whether we're making them go through a background process now before they can?
What they're currently going through is a conditional use permit process when they want to establish a business in the city.
That I understand. And we actually had one a couple of months ago.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And I don't recall any, and, and, and I might not have been looking at it carefully, now, that, there was any requirement for a background review of that, of the owner as part of that?
What the code states is that, uh, it's unlawful for any person to operate a massage establishment without first of maintaining, uh, or, or a massage establishment permit, that application for that permit, which is different from the CUP requirement, that's a land use approval, this is a regulatory licensing requirement for the business, um, that requires the background check.
Okay, and would that permit expire after 12 months?
I, I would need to look at the code more closely, if, if, if you can give me a minute, I can take a look.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, what about the existing facilities that we have now, the massage therapy? Do they have to update and, and comply now, or are they grandfathered in some way?
They're grandfathered until June 30th, uh, 2014. And honestly, there's not gonna, there's nothing in here that's that much stricter than the existing operating requirements.
Yeah, I know.
Our operating requirements in the ordinance are actually
Tougher.
Less, uh, strict than what's in the current code, in many regards, there's certain requirements that were in the code that aren't allowed now
Right.
Under the, the newer statutes.
Okay. All right, uh, if that's all the questions, we have a bit more.
I have a little more.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, the director of community services, um, Jim here, Jim Dasham, is going to have quite a big responsibility administering these background checks, right?
Yes.
Are there, are there established rules and, for, for administering these background checks? Are we opening ourselves up to liability issues at all, without a formal process for background checks?
There will be a formal process, there's an application process that the city attorney's office and I are currently working on, and, um, when that is completed, there will be a regulatory process that will be followed as an application, and, uh, the background part that's administered through the police department.
There's, there's no liability issue there, I mean, it's very standard for, to establish in the ordinance, the requirement that there be a permit and an application, and leave the actual administration for that to, to the, um, ability staff to craft, uh, what they need in terms of documentation.
Thank you.
Okay, let's open up the public hearing, would anyone like to speak on this item? I know you're here to speak. Take a big swallow and...
Yes, no, I'm fine. I'm Melinda Walker, I'm a massage therapist here licensed, uh, since 2001, I'm self-employed, and I rent a room. I just want to make sure that people like me and the three others sitting there, and the one sitting here, who are all self-employed massage therapists, that we are considered in this amendment, and that we have the right to do our business in a room that we rent part-time, and that that's taken into consideration, so that we don't lose our right to keep our business going. That's just my concern.
Would you like to respond? Yeah?
Uh, I can. Um, if, if I understand the speaker, um, you, you rent a room, you use that room as your massage establishment?
It's only used, yes, it's only used, you know, a couple days.
But the person who actually owns the building isn't involved in your business at all.
Right.
It's no different to me than if you were leasing a storefront, you would be the massage establishment.
Okay.
If you're a sole proprietor and you're certified by the state?
Okay.
You don't need to get a, a background check from the city.
So, and then would I need to go get the massage permit for the massage establishment?
No, there is no massage establishment permit anymore, there is under the existing code, well, there wouldn't be, if we, in this ordinance, there's no massage establishment permit, there's, there's, there's two things, a requirement that all practitioners be certified by the state?
Uh-huh.
And if you're not a practitioner, but you own or operate an establishment, you have to get a background check. You wouldn't fall into that latter category.
Because I am a massage practitioner.
If you're, if you're certified by the state to practice massage, you'd be considered sole proprietor, and you wouldn't need any further, uh, licensing from us.
You just make sure that you keep up to date your business license.
Right.
But let me go a little bit further in explanation, if you're subleasing
Yes.
A space within a primary use or business, let's say it's a, a fitness center or a nail spa, day spa.
Wellness center, chiropractic office, there's all kinds of businesses like that.
Now, the operator of that current business that you're, that you're subleasing inside?
Yes.
That person needs to come to us and obtain a background check, because they're operating an establishment, massage establishment, so we would need to make sure that person goes through the background check.
So they would only be required to get the background check, but not a massage establishment permit?
If that person who operates that business, that you're subleasing from?
Right.
Is a licensed, state licensed therapist, then they don't need to go through the background check, it's only if they're not licensed.
Because they already have with the state, okay.
Right, right.
Okay.
Okay.
So they would just need to come, and, so I would not have to have a permit, I would just have my own personal business license?
The only permit you need is your business license, if you are certified by the California Massage Therapy Council.
By June 30th, 2014?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you for clarifying that, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, and a pleasure to be before you, Seth Eker speaking on behalf of the Seal Beach Chamber of Commerce. Uh, I did provide written communication, and before I start, I wanted to really thank, uh, Community Development Director, um, for helping me understand and reach clarity on this, he dedicated some of his personal time to walk me through it, so, thank you, Director Basham, it was, it was very, very helpful. I wanted to also share with the commission kind of how we got to this place, because it was a little unusual, I make a habit, uh, of always looking at planning commission and city council agendas, I'm just one of those citizens, and I also take it very seriously as my responsibility as chair of governmental affairs. So then after reading, um, the ordinance and seeing, um, some of the issues that thankfully the city attorney and the director have subsequently clarified, I actually sent the item out to a number of my existing clients for my consulting business, people that I knew that were massage therapists, that were either subletting, that might be chamber members, chamber members that might have it as an accessory use, so there were about 12 to 15 people on this list that got out there, and it was a little concerning that really none of them were kind of aware of that. So, I know that we published it, I know that we're fully in compliance with the law in terms of noticing, but, um, I would welcome and encourage, and I think we're moving in that direction with ongoing communication with staff, particularly as it affects particular verticals or industries or business segments within our community, to make sure that the people that are most affected, the people that are here tonight, are at least aware that this is going on. So, thank you for that, Director Basham, making sure we're moving in that direction. Um, to go to the communication and key issues, is that the chamber is supportive of the staff's recommendation, the chamber is supportive particularly now that I've heard the additional changes, there were some concerns about that sole operator, the locked door issue, um, some of the other issues that came forward, I provided a few key bullet points for you, and I just want to read those into the record as well, that the ordinance, as presented, is mainly to comply with state law, and not meant to raise arbitrarily or lower the bar of requirements for the practice of massage, that the owner-operator will only be required to have a background check, not a massage certification, even if the individual is an employee operating under the direction of the owner, or an independent contractor. The background check, um, hopefully is not required on an annual basis of renewal, but would be required with a change of ownership, so, the reason I wanted to bring this point up is I was a little unclear in reading the code, if the renewal process meant that we would have to continuously pay for staff time and background checks with owner-operators of the massage establishment, and if so, I guess I'm a little concerned about that, particularly if the ownership hasn't changed, why would we have to continue to go through background checks every year? Do you want, do you want to answer that, or should I keep going?
Yes, please.
Uh, the reason for the renewal requirement, or the reason we put it in there was because people may be operating, uh, establishments in multiple jurisdictions, if there's been a, some sort of criminal violation in another jurisdiction, we might not catch wind of it without a renewal process. So that gives us a chance to revisit the operator and see if they're still compliant with, with, with all the, um, uh, findings that need to be made to prove the background check in the first place.
Okay, let me comment now, the same as the therapists have to renew their certification every year with the state, do they?
I believe the state certification is, is for two years, business license we know is our annual.
Is every year?
Yes.
Okay, so it's...
License isn't, isn't a regulatory process?
Right.
It's a revenue generator.
Oh, please don't say that. This is the church of the masseuse community, this is a revenue generator that kills me. Sorry.
It, it's, it's an important legal distinction, that it, those licenses don't serve a regulatory purpose.
Yes, okay, I knew that was, it wasn't regulatory, but, in any case, the owner of the establishment who is not a licensed therapist, they have to be renewed every year with a background check?
Under the, under the draft, yes.
Well, in order to make it a little easier, would it be if the owner of the establishment who is not a licensed therapist, no, it wouldn't, but be tied every other year, instead of every year, to a background check? Because I know they're going to, they're going to cost money, and the, the person who owns the business is going to have to pay for the background check, right? Do we know how much that is?
We haven't established the fee yet, that would be established by the city council.
Okay. So what is it now? Do we know?
I don't, I...
Not a clue. Okay.
I had a consideration for most part.
I'm just wondering if, if you really feel that every year it's necessary, are there that many changes?
It's within discretion of the city to, to set it as often as they like, I, I just wrote in the year, there's no particular reason, it has to be a year, that's, that's a policy call.
Well, Madam Chair, um, we think 12 months is, um, is fine for us to monitor, to determine whether or not any criminal activity has, has occurred, but it also gives us an opportunity to, uh, re-inspect the property, to make sure they're complying with the, uh, the provisions of this ordinance, it also gives us an opportunity to take a look to make sure the licensing i- is current, meaning that they maintain the same therapists or, or practitioners at this location, so, um, the, the fee is not going to be the same, the annual fee is not going to be the same as the original fee, um, I, I'm envisioning it's going to be substantially less, because it won't be as much as what we would need to do, and if the police department determines that they don't need to finger plan again, or turn to run the background, it is, is not, um, a taxing, um, procedure for them, and, um, we, we'll create that procedure and process.
Let me comment, for, for a background check, it's all on computer, you know, within five minutes, you can, I, I do credit checks on, on the computer, and with the apartment association, you, you hit enter and it's right there. So today with the way computers are set up, you do a background check instantly.
Madam Chair, we're, we're kind of drifting into the operation.
Yeah, we are.
Public hearing is still open.
Okay. All right, Mr. Eker.
Just sat back down, I didn't want to interfere, um, yes, I guess...
Who interferes?
Right, shocking. Um, with all due respect, I guess, um, the chamber's position, while I understand the director and the city attorney's comments, if a year is kind of an arbitrary number, then I would submit that, let's have it match in some way to massage therapists or practitioners, license renewal to a transition or change in the business, some kind of other significant metric, um, again, no disrespect intended, but I would think that if there was criminal activity in another jurisdiction with a large corporate entity, or with an entity that might have more than one operational, uh, unit, if you will, I would think that would come to our attention relatively quickly with our very alert code enforcement and police, so, I guess it seems a little overly intrusive, the more we try to provide code enforcement on an annual basis to establishments which seem to be in full compliance and moving forward, so I would just leave that for your consideration. Um, the language in the ordinance which is explicit, and I refer specifically to items N, O, and P in the ordinance on page 11, are in place to enforce, to ensure the enforceability of the ordinance, not in any way to denigrate or in some way, uh, damage the practitioners or profession of massage, and that some individuals have expressed concern about the timing of the requirement of licensing with the state to be accomplished by June, the end of June of 2014, and we do encourage the commission to explore with staff if it might be possible to develop or create exception for the timing of this requirement, and that may already exist within the state certification or process itself, but I, I wasn't quite clear on, well, what happens if someone's paperwork simply gets lost in the shuffle? Does that person suddenly have to stop doing, delivering massage or closing their doors? That seems, again, kind of arbitrary. And finally, I would just point out the two key points, one, the security of the single-owner operator, that the city attorney and the director brought up, and locked doors, that makes sense, thank you for that change, and also the key change, which is that you would have to have a certified massage, um, therapist as essentially the owner present in the building as well, thank you for that, um, change, if I understood that correctly. And I'm available for additional questions, that concludes my comments on this matter.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Good evening, I'm Cheryl Grabler, thank you for the changes that are being implemented, many of them have answered some of my bigger concerns, so I have a few minor ones.
Could you bring the, the mic a little closer to you, it's better?
Is that better? Oh, I can hear myself.
Doesn't get picked up on the mic?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Section 5.45, 110, um, under the old numerical or alphabetical, C, D, E, K, and U, um, just wanted to verify that on C, that a photocopy of the certificate is acceptable for the director to be provided, that was just a question that came up.
You mean for seminal of the application, or seminal?
Um, it just says a list of persons providing services, um, their, their name, photographs, certificates.
A US copy of the certificate.
A photocopy is acceptable.
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's what I thought, I just wanted verification, thank you. Um, under D, the second to last sentence, um, it appears to be a little bit too limiting, and was wondering if that could be removed?
That part has been struck.
Oh, it has been struck, thank you. Sorry, I missed that.
You're referring to the no person shall opt for commencement of any service?
Yes.
It's being struck.
Thank you, thank you. Um, item E, I just wanted to confirm, we keep two separate set of records, in our appointment book, the date, the time of service, the phone number, et cetera, the client is listed. Also in our soap charting, we keep all that information, do you, is that acceptable, or do you want more information in both forms?
No, that's acceptable.
That's acceptable, okay, thank you. Um, on the last sentence of item E, no massage establishment owner or employee, so utilize the records in any manner, et cetera, does this also mean that we cannot use the information from our forms to send out thank you notes, cards, information to?
No, we would ask.
Okay, okay, just, just thought I would ask, that was a question that came up. Item K, the thought process is incomplete, so I was wondering what was being left out, facilities of blank must be maintained?
Thank you.
Okay.
I thought it should be of the massage establishment.
Thank you.
Did, did everybody see that?
No.
In, in the renumbered version that you, I don't know which one the, the planning commission?
Pitch 10? Okay.
Yeah, we'll get the renumbered one, it's J, otherwise it's K. That the wall, ceilings, floors, and other physical facilities of blank, should say massage establishments must be maintained in good repair, in extreme condition, you will correct that for the, uh, draft as it forward.
Thank you. And I believe the last one I have is the old U, no massage establishment shall place, publish, distribute, et cetera, any advertising, um, et cetera, for services other than massage, does this exclude the fact that we also have alternative health providers such as acupuncturists, estheticians, holistic health practitioners, that they cannot list their services in our facility?
I don't think that's the meaning of that, but what do you?
No, this is, this is again was taken from the existing ordinance, uh, which presupposes massage as a standalone, um, activity, um...
So if you have other services you offer, yes, you can list those, they'll be fine.
Thank you so much. Okay, that's, that's all I have, thank you so much for your time.
I think we may want to revisit that, because the way it's written, it's pretty clear that you're not supposed to just suggest other services, um...
I think it needs to be rewritten, because it has broadened out, since this, the, our old ordinance was written quite some time ago.
Yes.
You know, it's taken into, you know, rate.
Once we get, we're close to public hearing, if we could get some, uh, feedback from the commission, that'd be great.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Hi, Alice Bowman. On page eleven, item M, talks about two of my customers in a room, and it specifically says that there must be a state certified massage professional present at all times. People have to dress and undress.
I don't think that's, would be kept, that's not-
I mean, and also, it says that no other person can be in the room, and we have a practice of having parents in a room if we have a minor. So there would be extra people in the room?
Yeah, there would.
So can we write that differently?
Okay, we'll talk about that in a minute.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for pointing out these mistakes or issues that we need to talk about. You look at it in a knowledgeable detail, that you know the day-to-day operation in it. Very helpful. Commissioner Campbell, oh, wait, we have one more.
Hello, my name's Irene Zegary, and I just want to know if I get my state license, and currently through the city, I'm paying a business license, and then getting charged an extra hundred dollars. I imagine, so they think it's for the police department, and the owner as well gets charged an extra hundred dollars per year, and her business license. Now, when this all goes through, do we still pay the hundred dollars to the city?
It doesn't sound as though you will, if it is in fact for the background check.
Yes.
Doesn't sound like you would be responsible for a background check any longer, because the state-
So I would just each year have to prove that I had my license through the state.
That's all.
Okay, and then you're figuring out-
And you still have to pay a business license.
You pay a business license, and then, okay, but I wouldn't have to pay the extra hundred. And then you're still deciding what the fee's going to be for the owner, and how often?
Yeah, we don't decide that fee. The city council will.
City council does, okay.
They don't have anything to do with money.
Okay. And then you don't know if she has to pay every year then the extra money too, then?
She probably will, if she's a non-licensed owner.
Okay. All right, well, it sounds like you have to work a few things out, but thank you for the changes that were made, because there were some obvious problems.
I'm glad you're all here.
Yeah, okay.
It's been very helpful.
Thank you.
You are state certified, right?
I am not right now.
You're not?
But I've been doing massages since eighty-five, so.
Oh, dear. But you are going to get a license, right?
Well, by twenty-fourteen.
Okay. All right, anyone else like to speak? And we'll close the public hearing if I, okay, seeing no one, we're close to public hearing. And what is the pleasure of the commission? Questions? Comments?
Do we need to see an update on that one issue that you want to revisit before we vote?
Well, I think that I have two items flagged, in addition to the one typo under the new J. One is the parents and minors, I, it never occurred to me that minors would be getting massages, so-
Yeah, they do.
We can revise the language for that. Currently, it says no persons other than those receiving a massage, and those administering a massage shall enter remain within a room where massage is being given or take, or being given or takes place. We can simply say, no persons other than those receiving massage, those administering massage, or a parent or guardian accompanying a minor who is receiving a massage, shall enter or remain within a room.
Okay.
Okay.
Sound good?
That could be added to the ordinance. The next question is this issue of advertising. As written, it, I believe it would clearly prohibit any massage establishment from advertising for any other services. Again, this is a holdover from the idea of massage, it's a standalone business with no other services provided. I think that the original tenth, again, this is from the existing ordinance going back some number of years, would prohibit advertising of any kind of illicit service. I don't know if that remains a concern of the commission or the city, but with the advertising, uh, uh, might be difficult, unless we were to call out what, do you have a suggestion? Okay. The director's suggestion was that you delete everything following and/or, so it would simply be, no massage establishment shall place, publish, or distribute, or so direct, or permit any advertising matter that depicts any specified anatomical areas. And specified anatomical areas is a defined term in the ordinance, it's borrowed from the adult use context, it refers to basically certain nude body parts.
What about acupuncture, maybe there might be a diagram?
If it didn't actually depict the whole-
Well, it's an outline of a body.
I don't think that would fall within our definition of specified anatomical area. If it was just to be a graphic, it wasn't a picture.
Oh, a graphic, okay. Okay. I think that's important, that there be other, other services provided without restriction, because it's kind of an extended profession now. It's much more sophisticated and professional and, okay.
One of the reasons that we undertook a wholesale rewrite after 5.45, rather than just continue to tinker with it, the state was pushing this direction, recognized that there was some elements that were probably outdated, so they-
Yeah. Okay, good. Any other comments?
That's very good, putting out, as you said, they're not doing just one thing anymore. You have a whole room of services.
Yeah.
And this is, this is just the way everything is these days. Where you consolidate, you get the most bang for your buck, so to speak. And that's just the way it has to be, and I think they should be able to list what their services are.
Madam Chair, there's one other item that was under discussion previously, and I do want to get back to Commissioner Goldberg's question, they're related, this is the issue of how often the renewal for the background check for the non-certified owner-operator. Commissioner Goldberg asked, what is the current requirement for the massage establishment permit, whether or not there's a sunset on those automatically. There are not, there is not one, they do seem perpetual, but there are strict limits on their transferability. Basically, they're not, you can't transfer them. So any new owner-operator that comes on board with the business would have to, would require a new permit, but there's no one-year or two-year renewal.
At this time.
At this time, and the existing permit system for businesses that don't employ certified massage.
Okay, so-
I think that's probably the minority at this point. But what, the question under the new ordinance that's proposed is, should you require renewal, and if so, how often? The current draft says one, there was discussion about bringing it to two, and that's the last point I think we need direction on.
You know, my impression is that the risk to the public, if there is a risk, is created by the, by unscrupulous masseuse. That's really what the public's concerned about. The owner-operator, I'm in favor of doing the background check initially, as we're currently doing. I'm not sure how much of a public service doing repeated background checks on the owner-operator serves. The owner-operator, by definition, is not going to physically touch a client, not going to be in a room. So I don't really know how important that is. We're not doing it currently. So my inclination would be for us to just continue doing what we're doing now, which is a thorough once-over at the establishment, have that expire with change of ownership, as we're currently doing, if I understand. So I'm not seeing the real necessity to repeat that on some periodic basis. I did hear from the director that it's important to do periodic inspections, but the ordinance that we have before us allows that to be done at any time, it's not necessarily with renewal. We can inspect in any period, I guess you can go in there every six months, twelve months, whatever. So I don't see that our ability to enforce this ordinance, or to inspect for violations, is contingent upon an annual background check on the owner. The other thing is that I understand that, you know, we have a lot of gymnasiums and exercise clubs, and they're starting to add massage to their services, and it probably is a part-time service. And, you know, that corporation and those owners are now going to have to go through this, and there may be multiple ones. They own five percent of it. So I imagine some of these companies may have more than one owner. And to have all of them have to go through this multiple times, I just don't see the necessity for that. I may just not understand what the liability is, what the harm could be caused by the owner. Now, the practitioner, I understand. I mean, there was an individual at one of our establishments, you know, that was convicted a couple of years ago of improprieties, but that was a practitioner, that was not the owner. So for me to support that, I'd have to understand more why that's important for both imposing that on the owners, and as well as taking staff's time to do that.
I can address, why I put it in there with the annual renewal, I mean, or any renewal period, was because what I heard anecdotally from other cities I've worked with, that it's not just the individual massage professional that they're concerned about, it's the serial operator of illicit establishments. They move from one jurisdiction to the next, and bring in people who set up massage establishments, they may hire some certified people, they'll also hire non-certified people to provide other services that are illicit. And that's the person that we're concerned about, because they move from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, set up shop for as long as they can, and then move on. And if we have, if they're getting busted in another jurisdiction, we could know, know about it within that, through an annual check. But it's a policy call for the state. I'm just saying, that was what I was trying to address, what I've heard from other states. It's not, it's not something that we've seen here, and it's not something that by putting in there, anybody was accusing anybody in the city of this way. It's just with this new state preemption, there's been, some cities have seen a real proliferation of massage businesses, and they're coming so fast that they're having a hard time keeping track of who is a legitimate bona fide massage establishment, and who might not be.
I concur with the assistant city attorney. You know, we may have a very conservative approach as to how we monitor and enforce the rules and regulations, but in other jurisdictions, they may not be that way, may be more relaxed, and the activity can occur in that separate jurisdiction. I'm not going to know about it, because they're not going through the same type of procedure that a certified therapist would have to do under the California Massage Therapy Council. I get updates from the state council in regards to any activities that occur with a license, but I can't do that with somebody who's an operator that's under our jurisdiction only. So it's going to be up to us to monitor that. So I don't quite understand as to wanting to relax a process for which that we want to be more involved in understanding, ensuring that folks are operating legally, especially in this community.
But you can do that by doing inspections, and-
No, I can't. I can't do a background check by doing an inspection.
Well, when you do your inspection, you can see who's practicing there, because you have a list of people that's going to be posted.
It's not the ones who are practicing, because they're monitored by the state. I'm talking about the operator.
State owners.
What are you concerned that the operator would do that would harm a citizen or a client?
If the operator is enjoying any type of activity that's considered illicit, and it shows up on his record or her record, then there is reason for which we can move forward in regards to how the police department wishes to handle that individual.
You could have somebody running the numbers, racketeering, all sorts of things.
Right.
The owner.
Right.
And that's the other thing I read in here, where if it's a corporation, you only need to do a background check on one of the owners. Well, come on, is the owner who's got a record going to step forward? No, it's going to be the cleanest owner is going to, you know, step forward for a background check.
We do in the background check on that one person, but the liability or the LLC or the proprietors, we do have their names as well, that's part of the seminal of their application, so we know who the other partners are.
Anybody who owned five percent of that corporation or more would have to undergo the background check. Now, a very large corporation, nobody's going to own five percent. So, but we're not as concerned about the large corporate operator. They're just, they're less likely to-
Are there degrees of background checks?
Suppose there might be, I don't know where-
Some are very intrusive. You know, they cover finances, they cover all sorts of things.
That's, the background check will be limited to the information that's required and the findings that need to be made to approve a background check. It's primarily criminal background check, residency check, business history. Have there been problems with the way in which they have operated massage businesses before? Have they had any relevant permits revoked or suspended? Have they been convicted of or pled guilty to any crimes that are related to sexual misconduct, for example? So that's what the background check's going to limit it to. It's not going to get into finances, it's-
So the city is not going to an outside agency to conduct your background checks?
No.
The city will define all the issues that need to be-
It would be limited by the findings that are set forth in the ordinance.
And remember, the background check is handled through the police department, so they make the determination as to the degree of scrutiny that's necessary. So I don't wish for us to debate necessarily the placing of the operator. At this point, staff feels an annual renewal of fingerprinting is not, it's not a huge task to be performed, but if it's something for which my staff and I believe we should engage in to ensure the safety of the folks who are the business operators, then I think that that's something that we should demonstrate and hope fast to, not make it so lenient.
On the other hand, if it's very intrusive, there're not going to be any owners in this city. And the service will not be offered or-
Fingerprinting is not intrusive, it's a matter of placing a hand, if it's a life scan, however the police department does it. I don't have a police officer here, I don't have the police chief here who can demonstrate that, but I don't think it is an intrusive process.
And the background check that we've put into this ordinance is, it very closely follows the current massage establishment permit requirement. It's not any, really any more intrusive than what we're already doing for non-certified establishments.
Are we requiring every year that they get a-
No. That is a change, but like I said, it's based on what I've heard reported out of other cities. The problems they're seeing with these kind of serial bad operators.
Another question. To run a, for the police department to run a criminal record check of arrests and convictions on a business owner, do you need the business owner's permission to do that?
Well, they have to, they would have to apply for the renewal.
No, but my point is-
Could we run the background check without their-
Yes.
I'm not sure.
I think if you suspect criminal activity-
But we could always investigate somebody who's suspected of criminal activity, yeah. Because I think administratively, one of the reasons putting it in there as a regular basis is it gets the city administratively to do it on a regular basis and to keep tabs on things, and not just wait till they think that it might be a problem, because they may not, we don't hear everything that's going on out there. I mean, that's just not what we're capable of doing.
It's probably on the application. If you sign the application, you agree for them to run this background check. And like I said, I run credit checks, plug in a social security number, hit the enter button, everything comes up.
That's not a criminal.
And that's, that's-
That's not a criminal.
Oh, but I have that, there are different extensions of what I can do on a credit check. Do I want to do unlawful detainee? Do I want to do a criminal background check? That will keep charging you for different things, and you can run those things. Because as someone who, you know, has rental property, I don't want to turn around and rent to someone who's, you know, been doing lord knows what, you know. You just don't know anymore, and you've got to protect your neighbors, you know, and your own investment. So, yeah, you run a credit check, plug into social, you tell them which ones you want, you click the little boxes, hit enter, boom, it all comes up, it's that fast. Very clean. And nobody's snooping around their house asking them what, it's what's on the public record.
My point is that if staff feels that they need to do criminal, periodic criminal checks for perhaps good reasons, they could do that without having the individual actually renew their license. Staff could do that on their own.
And my response is, I cannot do that. I cannot run a fingerprint of somebody.
So I would, it'd be interesting to know why someone has to be fingerprinted every year. I mean, you have, the fingerprints already exist.
But I think the issue is whether or not we should do a background check every year, and all that it encompasses. Is it necessary to do it every year? Probably not. But then where do you do the cutoff? Do you do it every other year, on even numbered years or odd numbered years, or, you know? How are you going to do it? How are you going to regulate it? How often are you going to do it?
I agree with you, I think every year's going to be a lot of work for not much bang for your buck. We're not doing it at all now. I appreciate, you know, where staff is coming from. You have to pick a number. Two years, I think, would be as aggressive as I'd want to support. I probably would, could see it going out three, four years as well. It's too bad we don't have any, there's no one here that'll be subject to this, there's no owners. Okay. Madam Chair, can I ask her to come to the podium if she's rolling?
We'll open the public hearing for your testimony.
I would like to...
For the record, all persons who were present when the public hearing was closed were still here.
Thank you, I'd just like to know what your opinion is on this discussion.
I'm Lisa Christman.
Let me ask you, are you certified?
No, I'm not. I do run out of room to massage therapists that will be certified in 2014. And I'm Lisa Christman, I own Natural Radiance in Bay City Center. I've been in business for over nine and a half years. I'm an esthetician, for over 14 years in the city, lived over 30 years. Why do I have to go through a background check? And it really didn't hit a point with me until you guys are talking about it. I don't even have a traffic ticket. So it's another revenue generator for me to have to pay, that's going to go to my renter, because why should I have to pay for it? As a business owner.
As a business owner?
Mm-hmm. Because they can't discriminate and get you off the hook and go after somebody else who they might. Now you're profiling, and that's how we get into all of this.
We're getting out of the subject here.
I'm just saying, this is what I do. I run credit checks on everybody.
Okay.
I know some of them are good, but in all fairness, you have to, that's your policy, you have to do it with each one.
Yeah.
But I have a state license as an esthetician.
As an esthetician, but not a massage therapist.
And there's quite a few people that aren't here that rent to massage therapists, that are not esti, that are not massage therapists either, within the city, a lot of them. What ruins it for you is people who have abused the system. That's what ruins it for you.
How frequently do you think you should be required, did I make that sentence right? Required to get a renewal of your background check?
A renewal for any of my licensing, be it cosmetology, esthetician, massage, every two years. Our establishment license is every two years, so minimum two years.
Two years?
Mm-hmm. That's the frequency of the renewals. Yeah, every two years. When you renew all my licensing, except for the city.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions before I close the public hearing?
No, Mr. Eko wants to speak from the chamber, just quickly.
Sure, Stephanie Gergen. Actually, I can wear two hats here. I can wear the hat as the Chamber of Governmental Representative, and I can speak as an owner-operator of a business, Beach Fitness, to which I am a part-owner and not a certified massage therapist, that could potentially be impacted by this ordinance. So if we were to bring in massage in accordance with the ordinance tomorrow, and I kind of walked through this with the director already, and I don't think my feelings on it have changed, like, I would agree that the concept of a background check for the owner-operator seems reasonable to an extent, particularly if you're adding it on as a use, if ownership changes, all of those conditions would seem normal and natural to me. I guess, based on the discussion and kind of what I've heard from Lisa and from others, that it would seem two years would be, I would concur with Dr. Goldberg, kind of the conservative estimate, no disrespect intended to staff or the discussion that we had. But I think that it creates a bonus, a burden, on the good operators. And I understand staff's desire to have the ability to control and regulate, and I don't think any of these people that have spoken would disagree that we want a high-quality standard. In my letter, I even talked about creating, you know, a good standard, not an arbitrary raising or lowering of our standards. So it sounds like if it's every two years, then I think it would be appropriate for the chamber to say that probably sounds about right, sounds consistent, and as an owner-operator potentially affected, I guess I would concur with Lisa Christman. And that concludes my comments, unless you have questions.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing again.
After hearing those comments, I would, my preference would be two years, under hearing comments, in that issue.
Any other comments?
If that's the commission's consensus, that could be accomplished by amending Part C of Section 5.45070. Here's at the top of page seven of the draft ordinance. That's where it says an approved background check shall be valid for a term of one year. Simply would say two years.
Just make it two.
Do you want to tie it into the anniversary of the renewal of their license?
Well, it would be just two years from the date of it's issued. So it's issued, and then it's valid for two years from that date.
Right.
You don't need to specify the anniversary.
Tie it into the anniversary, if it works?
Well, it's not tied into anyone's anniversary, other than getting...
No, no, the anniversary is when they get their renewal.
Oh, okay.
That's what they have to renew it, is that day, two years from that day.
Not their license, their business license.
That's a business license and your license with the state. Background check is required by the city or the state?
The city.
The city, okay. Then it would be with their, every other year with the business license.
Business license is an annual.
It's annual.
So I wouldn't recommend tying them together necessarily, they're just different processes.
Steph can figure that out. Steph can look that up.
Mr. Power, can we summarize where we stand there as a...
Yes, I'd be happy to. So there was the one I just noted in 5.45070, changing the term of the background check approval to two years. And then moving into Section 5.45110, this is the massage establishment operating requirements beginning on page nine. We are strike, I'm sorry, just slow down.
The new one, yeah.
And then the two years is going to be tied to the issuance of the license? What date do we use?
The term runs from the date of the issuance for two years.
Okay.
Anytime it's issued.
Damn, where'd it go? Barry didn't hear someone. Okay. All right. So this is again, this is in Part 110 on page nine. We are proposing to delete the first requirement, there's old A, requires at least one state-certified massage professional to be present on the premises at all times. That would be deleted. The fourth requirement, D, would be, is now renumbered C, and this is the requirement concerning a list of services to be provided. This would simply be rewritten to say, "A list of the services provided to the public and the prices and minimum lengths for each must be available to the public in a conspicuous location on the premises." Simply that, the remainder would be struck.
And it'd be in the form of a brochure?
Yes, it could.
Okay.
Moving on to what was formerly K, is now renumbered J. "The walls, ceilings, floors, and other physical facilities of," this is the new text, "the massage establishment must be maintained in good repair and in clean and sanitary condition at all times." Part L, formerly M, this is the one that was proposed to be amended to account for parents accompanying minors. The second sentence there would now read, "No persons other than those receiving massage, comma, those administering massage, comma, or parents accompanying a minor, or parent or guardian accompanying a minor who is receiving massage shall enter or remain within a room where a massage is being given or takes place." On that same page, moving down to what is now P but was previously Q, "All employees must be dressed in clean opaque outer garments covering the body from knee to neck," the new language is "excepting hands and arms," at all times while on the premises. Letter T, which was previously U, this is regarding advertising. This would now simply read, "No massage establishment shall place, publish, or distribute, or so direct, or permit, any advertising matter that depicts any specified anatomical areas." The remainder would be deleted. And finally, the last one, which is now U with previously V, would read, "All exterior doors shall remain unlocked during business hours from the interior side, except when no staff is available to ensure the security of clients and massage staff who are behind closed doors." Those are all the changes I had.
Thank you. Hey.
I have one other concern, another topic. And this was raised by the chamber regarding that some individuals have expressed concerns about the timing of the requirement to get their state license by our deadline of end of June. And the chamber is asking whether there could be some process of creating exceptions to the timing of this requirement, and also a letter from Melinda also mentioned that she has 10 years of experience, she doesn't have a state certification, and she's applying, but it's possible that the state won't be able to verify her old transcripts, et cetera. I'm just wondering one or two things. One is whether staff can, and maybe without us doing anything tonight, just give us a verbal commitment to have some flexibility for individuals that have extensive experience and practicing in town, and maybe need a couple of extra months, perhaps? Or for us to change the deadline from June of 2014 to say just another six months, to just start in January of 15, make it 18 months instead of 12 months?
Well, the, when you go on the California Massage Therapy Council website, they've taken consideration that since the passage of the bills that created this regulation of licensing, they took in consideration that there are going to be folks who have experience before the adoption of this, of the laws, which created non-conforming, if you will. So they've taken that consideration in what's considered a conditional license that they issue until the potential licensed person can obtain or secure the information as necessary to validate the amount of years of experience that they have.
So would you say you would accept the conditional license as of June 14?
Yes, I would, because it is something that has been established by the board.
And the conditional license is based on their experience?
Yes, yes. So that's something that the operator would need to organize and obtain through the California Massage Therapy Council, for so long as they show that to us, that license that shows is conditional. And the conditional is its time period that they give them a base period, if you will, you know, to secure that additional license.
I think that's the flexibility, I think that's adequate flexibility. Thank you, Mr. Melchior.
Thank you.
With that, I'd like...
I'm sorry.
I was going to make a motion, but I didn't know it was more common.
Oh, I don't know if you wanted to make a motion.
For approval was the comments that you made.
Changes, I would second that.
Okay, please vote. Okay, four to zero.
This item will be forwarded to the city council for final action.
Okay, we're done, thank you. Thank you for coming, it's very helpful. Next item on the agenda is Director's Report.
Yes, Madam Chair. At the city council's last hearing, which was May 30th, there were a number of ordinances that was presented to the council. The ordinances that were presented were part of implementation of the 2008 housing element certification that was completed several months beforehand. Two of the ordinances received first reading and will have second reading of the ordinances on June 10th. The third ordinance received first reading but has been extended to June 24th. That ordinance involves a rezone of a specific address, 1011 Seal Beach Boulevard, and is commonly referred to as the Accra Storage Site. City council asked or instructed staff to engage in conversation with the Boeing management staff to see if they would entertain any options of allowing their property to be secured for the possibility of maintaining our housing numbers. So we did meet with them, but we will provide the update to city council on June 24th.
What about the other, the newer housing element?
The newer housing element is for the adoption to extend to 2021, and the draft was submitted to HCD, they had very minor comments. We are ready to provide them with the minor comments, and they're ready to go on that one. They didn't have any difficulties with that, with that housing element.
So will they certify that one without the previous one? No.
Well, that's yet to be determined.
Full implementation of current housing element would be required before they would certify the next housing element.
That's yet to be determined.
All right. Any other reports for us?
That's it.
That's all? Okay. Commission concerns, Mr. Goldberg.
I was just wondering if staff could give us an update on the status of the pier restaurant RFP solicitation, et cetera?
The, if anyone's taken a stroll along the pier, you'll see that the end of the pier is closed off for public access. We've engaged in some emergency repairs of the structure that were in serious need. We did move forward with a declaration of an nuisance and emergency to seek funds from city council that were granted. So do I have any update in regards to a potential operator? No, I don't at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment. He's my bully pulpit. Last week, a letter appeared in the Seal Beach Sun going after one of the city employees, and it had my name attached to it. I did not write that letter. I was copied on that letter, and the Sun made a clerical error. They looked at it from a concerned taxpaying citizen, C.C. Patty Campbell, C.C. the Sun, and somehow my name went up a few spaces, and it came out as my letter. I almost choked when I read it, because it is not a nice letter, it's a nasty derogatory letter, I would never write a letter like that. I would certainly never go after city employees, I know how hard they work. I was always defending them, when somebody in here would come after a city employee, I would go after them, because I know how hard our city staff works. So I was horrified that my name was attached to this. Dennis Kaiser has assured me that a retraction will be in tomorrow's paper, we'll see what happens. In the meantime, I have an idea who wrote it, can't get a hold of that person by phone. But Luis Estevez, good man, he doesn't buy city vehicles, yes, he does take it home, he's a first responder. All city staff that are first responders take a city vehicle home, because they have to be able to get here in the event of an emergency. And so this man had nothing to do with the purchase, he's just got caught up in this horrible letter. It was unfair to go after him, because what the content of the letter was not true, it was not fair to put my name to it. I don't write stuff like this. I don't go after city employees. So I just wanted to make that very clear. I was horrified.
Glad you clarified that. Mr. Sloan?
I don't have anything.
And I don't have anything. Thank you all for coming, we're adjourned.